Record?
Well, good morning. Today is the seventh day of January. Time is nine o'clock. The board is in session. All three commissioners are present. Let's get a... Give us your... Identify yourself.
Good morning, Herb Catu, landfill.
Tim Klein, treasurer's office.
Bob Carney, operations.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Jennifer Pike, HR.
Robyn Swain for procurement.
Bob Perkins, he has time.
Aaron Brady, assessors.
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
Real IT guy.
Ethan Boardy with the clerk's office.
Richard Back to Donald Services.
Ethmon, treasurer.
Great, great. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay, if you don't have any changes, we do have some unfinished business. I'll accept a motion to remove unfinished business from the table. I look to review the unfinished business from the table for consideration. Second. Okay, you've heard the motion and further discussion. Hearing not, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This unfinished business item is related to a subdivision and a rezone application we considered at your December eighteenth public hearing. Our staff had initially recommended denial, but after hearing the evidence that was presented that night in the testimony, you voted to approve the request and directed staff to update the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and prepare conditions of approval, as well as prepare final documents for your consideration. We're pleased to present those for your consideration this morning.
All right, and our planning is on commission recommended approval, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve project number two zero two four zero one two one five dash ZC dash DA dash S dash PR Culkin's Creek subdivision.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? We did have a detailed discussion at our finding zoning meeting, and I think we should approve this. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the new business, we have resolutions of a resolution and a provisional tax exemption. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number three zero five nine. A resolution approving the membership purchasing cooperative. Do you have anything to do with that?
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before this morning is a resolution for Ada County to join a cooperative called Actia Cooperative. But I just noticed on our resolution that we have the Purchasing Cooperative America noted on there, so I'd like to retable this resolution until next week, if we could.
So it's not drafted correctly?
Yes, we need to get the right cooperative name in there.
Yes.
All right, so you want to table it till next week?
Yeah. What was that, the fourteenth?
Yes.
So yes, if we could get it retabled to January fourteenth.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table resolution number three zero five nine until the January fourteenth business meeting.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got it tabled.
Great. Work on the language.
Okay, will do. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, you may actually report this, but I think it would be useful to report the actual savings of the county by doing what we're doing.
Yeah, and just real quickly, I can touch on that. Joining cooptives allows us the opportunity to really take advantage of economies of scale. These contracts for these cooptives are done by lead agencies, very large agencies, and as such, we get the same discount as even the largest agencies across the nation. Typically, that's anywhere between twenty to thirty percent savings.
Substantial savings to the taxpayer of Ada County.
Yes, it is.
By being able to do this.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you for one.
Correct.
Searching it out and researching it for the taxpayers.
Yeah. Happy to do so.
And we'll be happy to take it up next week.
Great.
All right.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up, we have a provisional tax exemption for Interface Sanctuary. Our staff has looked at that, and I guess I need to open the public hearing on that one, huh? All right, public hearing is open on provisional tax exemption. Is there any discussion? Hearing not, we'll close the public hearing on the provisional tax exemption listed on the agenda, and I'll accept the motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the provisional exemption on parcel number R nine four four one zero 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 one zero and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll get down to procurement.
Oh, here you are.
You had your chair.
Not even more.
We have an item on the agenda, opening of RFP twenty-five ten Ada County Flexible Spending Account and COBRA programs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Ada County Procuret received two proposals for this project, and Robyn has our voluntary procurement system all teed up. If you're ready for us to open.
We're ready.
So just a little bit about this project. The intent of this RFP is to obtain proposals from qualified vendors for providing administrative services for Ada County's flexible spending accounts program to include healthcare, dependent care, and COBRA administration, as well as retiree enrollment billing and collection services. So today, we're going to be just looking at the number of the proposers, and Robyn has it on the screen. I'll go ahead and read those into the record. The first one is Application Software Incorporating Doing Business as ASI Flex. Next proposer is Flexible Benefit Administrators Incorporated, all by Inspira Financial Health Incorporated, and Interflex Payments LLC, doing business as Ameriflex, and Lively Incorporated, all by Navia Benefit Solutions Incorporated, and PNA Administrative Services Incorporated, Peak One Administration, Surenci Life and Health Insurance Company, and Routed Out the Builders, Total Administrative Services Corporation, TASC. Those are our ten proposers, and we would like to request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five open business meeting.
We can only get ten people to bid on that?
That's pretty good.
I didn't know there were that many available.
I didn't either.
Well, good. All right, well, I'll accept the motion to table this till the twenty-seventh.
I'll move to table the award of RFP two five zero one zero to January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we have motor vehicle escort licenses. We have six of them. Any question or discussion on these motor vehicle licenses? I think there are a lot of motorcycles, actually. I don't know.
I think they all are.
Yeah. Okay, any question or discussions? Hearing not, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the six motor vehicle escort licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Well, Gary, thank you. All right, we have clerk's offices up next. You got a good word for us?
Representing Trent Triplett, so I'll do my best. Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. Couple of quick updates from our office. One, Trent's really busy right now working on some election legislation, and the timing is pretty prime for the upcoming legislation, working with the association and some of the desires and legislation on how we can adjust some of the timelines with some of the upcoming elections. So we're excited for that opportunity. We've also got the Secretary of State is hosting his annual election statewide conference. It's at the Riverside, the back half of this week, so we're excited to have a lot of our elections team and admin team will be over there participating and sharing best practices. But we're also excited, again, ballot verifier. Trent will be on the agenda. He'll be walking the entire state through the ballot verifier, which is a good dress rehearsal. A few weeks later, Trent's actually getting flown out to San Jose, California. There's a partnership for large election jurisdictions. They've got a hundred jurisdictions in this partnership. It's all the big players across the nation, so the Houston's, the LA's, the Chicago's, and we just made the threshold. You have to have three hundred thousand registered voters to qualify for this partnership. So we slipped in at the tail end of that, and we're excited for this annual conference because Trent will also present the ballot verifier in front of that network of large jurisdictions. So we've talked a lot about it, but it continues to be worth its weight in gold, so that's kind of our upcoming battle rhythm. And then a sensitive word to some of the room is, it's hard to believe, but on the twenty-third of this month, we sit with you all, and we have our budget kickoff meeting so that we can start working on the upcoming budget. So that will be a big lift with department heads, elected officials, as we get closer and closer to presentations, deliberations, and adopting that final budget. So that's kind of the cadence of our office right now.
So let me get this straight. Trent is going to present at this conference, but he just, we barely can fit in to be a member of it.
That's correct. The threshold was three hundred thousand registered voters, so we're...
Was he going to be presenting anyway?
More than likely. That particular executive director of that partnership is very interested in the ballot verifier, so I think he would have had a seat on the agenda either.
Well, that's good. I think that's great.
Yeah.
Because we're starting leading the nation in how to demonstrate that we have a clean and fair election.
That's correct.
And I think that's a new thing. People didn't realize it. Look at the ballots.
Without identifying.
Without identifying who they are, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Unless they write their name on the ballot.
I may or may not have put an identifier on my ballot. It did identify.
All right, good enough. Well, great. Anything else?
No, sir.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Okay, we have personnel actions. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we have the assessor's offices. Anyone here? Oh, yeah, here we have. Hi there.
Good morning.
How are you doing this morning?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Great.
Brad is in class this week with the rest of our appraisal staff, so I'm here in his place. We are wrapping up our annual reappraisal. We've reappraised forty-six thousand residential parcels and...
That all?
All commercial land on top of it, so another eleven thousand parcels of commercial land on top of forty-six thousand.
Great.
So it's been a big lift the last few months.
I bet.
I want to thank you personally for approving the two positions that we got for fiscal year twenty-five because that made all of the difference in our reappraisal, so thank you very much for that. Upcoming processes, these next four or five months are going to be really busy as we prepare to mail assessment notices and kickoff appeal season. Real property, notwithstanding all of the sales review and trending analysis that we'll undertake for both residential and commercial. We also will be sending five thousand personal property declarations in the coming weeks, and several hundred ag applications and letters as well. So all of those processes take a lot of time, and the next five months are going to go really fast for us in preparation for appeal season, so it'll be here before we know it.
Yeah, sure will. Well, are we all through with the state tax commission and the appeal process, or are we still going through that?
We are, we're done.
All done?
Yep, we're done.
Okay.
We have one outstanding, but it's well on its way to being settled, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, go ahead. Just to reiterate what you just said for taxpayers, because the tax notices are going out right now, and a lot of people are misconceptions that they can appeal that in terms of their assessment. So what you just said, I think that anybody who's listening, which probably not many, but anybody who's listening needs to understand, this is when the appeal or assessment is...
Yes, correct.
Is early in the year, not late in the year when they get their actual tax bill.
Correct, yeah. Although that doesn't stop us from getting calls.
Exactly.
How can I fill my taxes?
I suppose that would, yeah.
I'm sure you get a lot of them.
All right, well, you do have some tax cancellations.
Yep, we do.
Do you not?
Mm-hmm.
That are not really cancellations. They're merely adjustments. Code calls and cancellations.
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, well, I'll accept the motion on the tax cancellations.
I'll move to approve the tax cancellations as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Well, we're fortunate to have our distinguished treasurer with us. Ethmon.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. It looks like we'll be processing some tax cancellations or adjustments. These are always a priority for us, especially if it involves a refund, want to get those funds back to the taxpayer, and then just make sure that their record is correct in our records. Did want to let you know we are mailing delinquent notices this week. So this was for the two thousand twenty-four tax bills. Idaho law does require an assessment of a late charge and interest to accrue on the delinquency, so those are going out. If you should receive calls on those or if the assessor's office receives calls, feel free to forward those to us, and we can respond.
We'll be happy to.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Number, do we have the numbers? Do you know the numbers of?
Of the...
Prox, prox.
Yeah, so we will send approximately ten thousand delinquent notices.
It's in the nine thousand area.
Really? How many of those will be mortgages?
Non-chiefing mortgages.
Typically. They have been known to...
Right.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
And where is that in relation to? Is this higher, less than normal?
I believe it's on track. I'll defer to Tim.
Yeah, last year we had seven thousand and something, and this year we have like nine thousand and something. But a lot of times when, after we produce those, we're still getting tax payments, and we ran that job to produce those last week, and we've been subsequent in getting. So a lot of times, they're crossing in the mail. So a lot of calls we get after those are sent out because they'll probably get them, you know, three or four days from now. Hey, I paid this, and it says I'm late, and we look in there, yeah, we received your payment, you know, two days ago. So there's that. We'll probably receive another thousand or so. So, but it's pretty, pretty close to in line when you consider the parcel count increase that we get each year, and so seven thousand, nine thousand, that's within a reasonable range, I think.
And to Tim's point of crossing in the mail, as we still receive payments that are marked timely, we're still looking at the envelopes and the postmark date, and at that point, reversing off any late charge or interest.
Okay, how many of these ten thousand you think are part of that printer error?
We were wondering, but we don't have a real easy way to look at that. We did run one query that kind of brought it down to where we think there's maybe a thousand of them of the five thousand, because five thousand of them were mortgages that we, you know, sent out for people, but those were paid by the mortgage companies. Five thousand were non-mortgage companies, and we think that there was roughly about a thousand that we hadn't received payment at the time we ran that job. I know we've received some since then because it was due for them by the thirty-first, and so...
Right.
Yeah, so that was just a timing thing.
Right. Well, that may, that may even be evidence of the increase from seven thousand to nine thousand. That could be, that could be part of it. All right, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have some grants. We have grant number two five zero one A B, grant application for Department of Homeland Security for the Office of Emergency Management. Any question or discussion on that one? I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve grant number two five zero one A B as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have grant number two five zero two. Again, this is the Homeland Security for our emergency management and community resilience organization.
I'll move to approve grant number two five zero two dash A B as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just as a note, that entity, if I understand correctly, that entity basically functions on grants.
Yeah.
For the most part, so.
Well, we do, we do kick in some money, and there is, there is membership, but yeah, the operating...
So it's an essential part of their operational function.
Oh, yeah.
Which again, just helps the taxpayers.
Exactly. All right, well, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have approval of minutes. I'll accept the motion for the approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have some events at the Barber Park Education and Event Center. We have four events. I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing not, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, now we have, excuse me, we have a number of agreements, seven agreements. I review the agreements. I'm sure my colleagues have. Is there any question or discussion on any of these agreements?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Just to point out a couple of them, the Ada County Victim Center and the regional, St. Luke's Regional Medical Center. We have a cooperative working group there with a large number of people. This is one of them. And then the last G on there is City of Star. Again, it's an example of how our sheriff's department works with the cities where appropriate, where they need to to beef up the security in our smaller cities.
Yes, and that's a, that is a good cooperative agreement for the safety of the community. Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, last up, we have a miscellaneous item, and we have a request from Boise County to accept their waste at the Ada County landfill. And as you know, we, this board has to approve an outside request for waste. We have Herb here. You want to tell us what the, about how much waste we're going to be collecting and how that will impact our landfill?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Last month, we received a request from Boise County to accept materials from their Idaho City Transfer Station. We anticipate if this is approved, that we would receive anywhere from a hundred tons to three hundred tons a month, roughly anywhere from four to ten percent of our total flow that we currently accept today. So it's not significant, but it is something that to be obviously noticed in our flow. We can handle a hundred tons a month pretty easily, so we average anywhere from eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred tons per day, so we wouldn't have to do any additional staffing or obtain any additional equipment to accommodate that flow. We would anticipate anywhere from thirty-nine hundred dollars to eleven thousand seven hundred dollars in revenue, looking at those numbers, but it helps the finesse, I guess you could say.
Well, and of course, the larger issue there is the duration of the landfill.
Correct.
And, because it would, it would put more waste out of county into our landfill.
That is correct.
Ultimately, we will have to build a new one, but we, but I've heard there's even a capability to increase our lifespan of the landfill.
That is correct, so we have the ability to increase our subgrades along with the disposal footprint. That's something we're currently investigating with our engineer of record. I think also this is a temporary request. It doesn't appear to be a long-term request. Boise County has been hauling the material to the Payette landfill, which is significantly further than our existing site, so they're looking at alternatives. But if they do wish to continue, this may be something where we can entertain a landfill use agreement in the future if we deem appropriate.
Because they've been hauling it out to Payette.
Yes, sir.
We're a lot closer.
Yeah.
At Payette. Now, is this mainly coming from Horseshoe Ben, or it might have been...
The Idaho City Transfer Station is my understanding.
They accept transportation up there?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Just, just as you might want to tell us again, some of the things that have been done out there to increase the longevity of the landfill, which would help us, help neighbors if they need help.
In regards to the slope stability or the redesign of our slope configuration of the existing waste footprint, that's given us about four to five years' capacity. In addition... In addition, we have a significantly additional space on the northern front or boundary of the landfill site that we can tap into. That's going to give us another ten to fifteen years of life there. Additionally, we're working on our pancake compaction process. We're waiting for some additional equipment to come into place that will give us another ten years of capacity as well, based on our calculations on our expected compaction rate.
Well, that's an additional twenty-five years.
Yeah, it's pretty significant.
That's significant.
And I think also, once the RNG project comes into play, there is some opportunities in the future to look at how we can get organic waste out of the waste stream, maybe feed it into a digester of some sort to help induce the drawing of the landfill gas that would feed the RNG plant that could also help us create some additional capacity.
Great. Way to go.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job, yeah.
As well as when we, when adjacent, when our neighbors need help, we can help.
You, are, are they, is Boise County, are they looking at building their own landfill or what?
I think they're looking at options. I've heard they may potentially, since their hauler is republic, it potentially could go across counties into Elmore County, potentially. I'm not sure if that's something they plan to do long-term, but that's something I would assume that would be part of their discussions with their hauler.
I don't know. There's not a viable landfill in Elmore County as of today.
Not at the moment. Not at the moment. Yeah.
I know Elmore County is in the process of building their own landfill. And now that's kind of
So those are the only two sites I can think of is Payette or Elmore. So there's, their options are somewhat limited, so they're really trying to assess how they can reduce that haul time along with trying to maximize their efficiencies for moving that material.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Herb, do you feel that the, the revenue, the extra revenue we'll get for that would adequately offset the loss of landfill space?
Yeah, we, we did an analysis last year, adjusting our rates from the sixty-one to thirty-nine. In that calculation, we assumed some inflation factors to help us cover that cost for the, the loss of capacity.
That was built into our cost of service study, isn't it?
That's correct.
Is that about done yet?
We're getting close. We're getting close.
All right. Hey, well, thanks, Herb.
Thank you.
We didn't vote on that, did we?
Nope.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
Let's see, I approve the request from Boise County to accept their waste at the Haida County landfill and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second. All right, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Unfortunately, we've, we've been working, or should say, our landfill director's been working real hard. And that's quite something to be able to increase the capacity in addition to twenty-five years. That's a monumental task. We want to thank you for doing that because that saves a lot in the future. It's well beyond our times, for sure.
Definitely.
Because that's twenty-five years from two thousand and sixty-five, isn't it?
That's correct, and it really gives us time to focus on alternative technologies that they continue to develop. Hopefully, there'll be an Elon Musk out there that will have a solution for the waste business that we can tap into in the future as well.
Maybe you can use one of these starships.
That'd be good. Send it to Mars, I guess.
Who knows? All right.
I'll be here.
Yeah. You'll be over a hundred then.
You will.
All right. Well, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business that can be brought before the Board? Here now, we'll be adjourned. Okay, we're on the record. Good morning. Today is the seventh day of January. The time is nine thirty-seven. Or no, it's nine thirty-two.
You have a time clock.
Yeah, I think it's still keeping correct time, isn't it? That's good, because there's, there's been sort of a, a an issue with our clocks keeping the rec, keep, all of them keeping
In this room.
In this room, just in this room. I think it's in this room. It's a spell in my place. Hopefully, that will, will do the job. But anyway, the Board of Commissioners is in session, acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical District. All three Commissioners are present. We also have with us
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Who's with them communications.
And real IT guy. Okay, good. Are there any changes to the agenda then?
No, there are not.
Okay, first thing we'll do is the approval of the minutes. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes EMS Services District for twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, as listed on the agenda.
Okay, is there, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a couple of agreements. Is there any question or issues on any, on these two agreements? Here none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve agreement number eight-two-six-seven dash one-one dash two-five and agreement number three-zero-three-two-zero.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Here now, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, welcome back to the Board, Eric. We missed you.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair, Commissioners, good morning.
Yeah, we missed you. All right, how you, your, your health is, is better than it was before?
I actually feel it's pretty darn normal, maybe even a little better.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
Pretty amazing.
I've, I've understood you, you had a few procedures. It was kind of fun.
Yeah, I, I never thought that I would get, there's a clot busting medication called Transplasmogen Activator. It's been around since, gosh, I was in paramedic school when they started using it for heart attacks. But what they ended up doing with me is putting in a big catheter in my internal jugular vein, down through my heart, up into my pulmonary arteries. And they had to do that under fluoroscopy, you know, and shooting that contrast dye and to see that they got everything there, and then for twelve hours in the ICU, I got a TPA. But I had no dietary restrictions, so when I got up to the ICU and hooked up to this thing and I've got a, a bunch of tubing sutured to my shoulder to make sure it doesn't come out, and they served me peni pasta, so eating peni pasta and getting TPA at the same time. Just bizarre, but I'm glad to be here.
We're glad, we're glad you're back. We're glad you're here with us. We, we, we miss you a lot, and we're just happy that you're feeling good and going, going strong.
Thank you very much.
Have you got any, any exciting news to tell us on your
No, you know, nothing exciting, you know, you certainly heard about the tragedy that we had. We actually, this afternoon, we have a celebration of life ceremony for Captain Hardaway's daughter who committed suicide a little over a week ago. And then we have a tentative date for the eleventh of January for services for Cody Hansen, but we're still looking for a venue that's going to be able to service, so we'll just, we're working on that as we speak, but not the way I wanted to come back to work, certainly.
No, that's, that's unfortunate, but, but there's a strong Haida County family to
Certainly.
And so when, when is that again?
Tentatively, January eleventh.
All right, well, well, thank you. We certainly appreciate you being here and smiling and being healthy and, and good on you. You haven't formed any more weddings, have you?
I have not, no. Just the one.
Just the one.
Just the one.
Okay. All right, any questions from the Board?
I have a shingle. Wedding, uh, is the shingle out yet?
I do not, no.
The word's getting around.
Maybe.
Yeah, all right. Well, unless there's anything else, is there any other business we need? Well, we'll be adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.